Do you recognize the 166?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, before we recess for lunch, there was a question about what impact Bill 166 will have and, you know, just like the Senator who was questioning it, you know, who was questioning it, I too failed to simply just look at the committee report. The committee report included a testimony from the Insurance Commissioner which included an amount that if this act is implemented would generate $98,000 a year. And so now the body should be in receipt of a breakdown of how that $98,000 was arrived at, and so I'm hoping that that would answer the question that the Senator had.
I -- who was the one that raised the question? Senator Nicholas. Have you had a chance to review what's been provided?
I have, yes, Mr. Speaker. And the, um, yeah, no, the testimony did does provide the amount. The question was, how does this amount translate into the improvement of services within the division? I mean, we can dump $98,000 into the division, but how does $98,000 or more translate into an improvement in the actual services of the division? That's the ultimate question that I have to ask because in the end, you know, when we have service issues within that particular division, if we're going to spend more money on it, exactly how is that going to be expected to change?
And, Mr. Speaker, I'll yield to that question as well. It's pretty surprising that the Oversight Chair of the Department is the one asking that question because if he just knows and works with the Department, he would know the type of assistance and challenges they face. It's no secret that, you know, they have limited amount of employees in that division. I believe it's about four or five of them. They don't have their own, um, their, you know, they don't have their own copier and, you know, I mean, these are just basic things, basic supplies that they need, and having a dedicated source of revenue to be able to give them the tools to carry out, basic tools, Mr. Speaker, to carry out their work is something we really need to take a look at. You know, it's always been the practice of when revenue tax as a whole gets their budget, a majority of that is allocated to the revenue side and not so much the regulatory side, which the Insurance and Banking Commission is part of. And so, you know, this, you know, this just is really recognizes the importance of the Insurance and Banking Commission and ensuring that in order to be able to protect the consumers, our people who are customers of these insurance companies and banks, that they have the basic tools to carry out their services. So that's, you know, that's the answer. That's the answer to how is it going to translate into them being able to effectively carry out their work. It's because we're giving them the tools, which in the past, tools haven't been given to them. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Nicholas, is that satisfactory?
No. What tools? A copier? That's 200 bucks a month. This is $98,804 a year. You know, I mean, we can say that I'm the Oversight Chair of the agency, and that's absolutely correct. Not only am I the Oversight Chair of the agency, and this bill didn't come through me, so I can vet it, but I've also used this particular division in the private sector when I worked in the banking and insurance industry. So what is the $98,804 going to do to improve the services of the division? You know, we can't just keep spending money, Mr. Speaker, and saying it's for tools and it's for this and not being specific, and we need to be specific about what kind of improvements we're going to be able to expect. When we spend the people's money, we need to know what we're going to get out of the expenditure. It's not just a matter of saying, oh, let's give them the money because they need the resources because somebody wrote a letter in saying that they support it. What are we buying with the people's money? Because this is being taken out of the general fund also. What are we shortchanging in the general fund to the tune of $98,804? 100 grand. That's three schoolteachers, two nurses. What are we getting for this investment? And the reason why I ask is because that division has internal issues that need to get resolved of the existing structure that's in place there right now. I'm not a big fan, Mr. Speaker, of constantly throwing money at situations expecting it to just resolve itself because we threw more cash at it. If we're going to spend $98,000 more, what are we going to get out of it? Where's the money going? What's the itemized breakdown? What's the ultimate improvement that we're going to be able to expect from the division? Those are the very specific questions that we all should be asking all of our agencies, and absent something clear to that effect, we shouldn't be putting more money into it. And perhaps that's the reason why the bill didn't come to me, because I asked those very hard questions. What's the return on investment when we spend the people's money for your particular operation? So, yeah, no, that, obviously, the question wasn't answered.
Mr. Speaker, if he still wants me to elaborate on that, I can attempt to, if you would allow.
Please.
Yeah. So, you know, he's asking, you know, what, what, what things are they gonna, are they going to be able to pay for this? Well, there's a whole list of things, Mr. Speaker. I mean, he talks about increasing and improving the collection over revenue tax because he held monthly oversight hearings. Hold monthly oversights, weekly oversight hearings on this division, and maybe he'll find out, or simply work, call them up and work with them. And not say, just because a letter was sent to another Senator, that it didn't come through him, and now you're going to come up here and say that the answer is not throwing more money at them? We haven't been given them the appropriate level or resources they need to carry out the basic, the basic responsibilities, Mr. Speaker.
So if it's about communicating with the division and getting a whole list, then where's the list?
All right. Do you have anything else, Senator Nicholas?
Yes, I do. Could I have a one-minute recess, Mr. Speaker? I need to track down my document.
I'm Bill 166.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So absent the fact that we don't have any idea what this money is actually going to be used for, I'm very uncomfortable with Page 2, Lines 20 to 24, that would say that the funds would just be automatically appropriated to the division, provided that they turn in a schedule of anticipated expenditures. We haven't even seen anything. We don't even know what the need is. And even if you have an anticipated expenditure, what is that going to mean in terms of improved results? I can tell you exactly how I'm going to spend $98,000, but how is that actually going to result in improved services? So that being said, I prefer that we still retain appropriation authority from this fund. If we're going to have money go out of the general fund into this special fund, we definitely need to make sure that we're holding accountable the outcomes of that special fund, like we hold every other special fund's outcomes accountable. So I would like to make a motion to strike Lines 20 to 24 and to restore the stricken through language of subject to appropriations.
On this Nicholas amendment, any other wish should be heard? Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Hallelujah, Mr. Speaker. That's progress. I have no problems with that, you know. Instead of, I mean, that's, that's how we're showing, we've got to work together here because it makes sense. It makes sense that, okay, now we're going to ensure that these fees are going to be deposited into account that is for, that is specifically for this division and for the purpose that we're stating in this legislation. And yes, come back here, and then we'll, you know, we'll appropriate it to that division on how we see fit. So, great, you know, I support this amendment. Thank you.
Any other Senator who wish should be heard on the amendment? Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I support the amendment as well, and I think really it's just standard procedure. If we all recall, what we've done in the budget is that we look at all the special funds that are collected for individual departments and agencies or specific functions or tasks or what have you, is that that is always then appropriated by the legislature. And many times, you know, except for this case, that, you know, the amount of money was greater than maybe some others, usually we give it to them for operations when they submit their budget. So I think, like the previous Speaker said, that, you know, that we are moving in the right direction, so I do support the amendment as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other Senator? Any other Senator? Any objection to this Nicholas amendment striking Lines 21 to 24 and reinstating the crossed-out section in 19 and 20? There being no objection? Senator Nicholas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just one more item on the effective date. On Page 4, the act will be effective immediately. Unfortunately, what that would do is it would cause money to be taken from the general fund and put into the special fund in the current fiscal year, but the current fiscal year's budget was based on the assumption that these $98,000 would be included in the anticipated fees to go into the general fund. So if we're going to make sure that this does not cause the general fund to become imbalanced and therefore have the governor deficit spend to the tune of $98,000 from the general fund side, we should have this effective at the commencement of fiscal year 2017. So I would like to make the amendment on Page 4 to strike the word, the words "immediately" and enactment, and to have it read, "This act shall become effective upon commencement of FY 2017."
Thank you. On the Nicholas amendment, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't, I don't have any problems, no objections to that, but I just have a question for the mover of the amendment. If he's saying that this was, these funds were anticipated in the development of the budget? Was it? And if so, how was it? Because earlier, that's why we're, you know, we broke for the recess, because we didn't know. You know, we didn't know where, how much it is, where this money is, or if we're anticipating it. So if he would yield and let me know, how, I mean, how was this part of the anticipation of the budget?
Senator Nicholas.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It's actually written in the sponsor's own bill on Page 4, Lines 1 through 3, when he strikes through the Treasury of Guam to the credit of the general fund. That's the original language. So the original language of this existing law is that these fees are to go to the Treasury of Guam to the credit of the general fund. So by passing this bill, striking that through and maintaining Lines 1 through 3 in Section B, and having the money instead go from the Treasury of Guam to the credit of the general fund instead into this Banking and Insurance Enforcement Fund, we're taking money that under existing law was supposed to go into the general fund and now putting it into the Banking and Insurance Enforcement Fund. And so since the budget that we passed for FY 2016 was with this law still intact, that money is supposed to be going into the general fund for FY 2016 as part of the FY 2016 projections. And so if we're going to pass this bill, we've got to make sure that we're not, you know, pulling money out of the general fund that was already part of the original projections. So we need to make this effective for the next fiscal year.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I asked that question because there was another initiative we had here on the safety inspection fees, that the law, just like the law that he referenced, had mentioned that it was, 15% was supposed to be pulled from the safety inspection fees and deposited into the, into the general fund, but there was no tracking of it. And so, you know, he answers my question indirectly, that there really wasn't any, you know, any way to make that determination on if this money, how much, how much it was and if it was going into the general fund. So he, you know, that the question has been answered.
All of these, all of these fees are included in the license and fee collection section of the revenue of the, that's there, I think. I believe in the budget bill, it's about 5 million throughout the government. So that's where it would have and should have gone and is all used. So there being no objection to the, to the amendment making the effective date October 1st, 2017? I mean, 2016?
My original language, "This act shall become effective upon commencement of FY 2017," but I would like to yield to legal counsel to properly structure it, just so that we can make sure that what we're saying is that the money is going to be going into this special fund at the next fiscal year.
All right. There being no objection? You still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so with that, I'd like to thank the mover of the legislation for us coming to terms of how this needs to be structured. And I would also like to invite all of my colleagues to join me in future oversight hearings of this particular division, which is part of my overall plan on how to make sure we tighten everything up in the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Right now, you know, they're going through a lot of issues up there in multiple divisions. I, in fact, wrote a letter to the governor asking him to look into another division. I know from, for a fact and personal experience, this particular division as well has issues. I don't think it's necessarily with respect to the criminal activity that's been going on in other areas, but definitely at an operational level. If this special fund is going to be enforced by next year, and we're going to be providing funding, and we're going to be appropriating it for next year's operation, this division, then we're definitely going to all need to work together, ask some very tough questions in future roundtables and oversights with respect to the Insurance and Banking Division as to how it's been conducting business, as to the level of service or lack thereof that it's been providing to its particular clientele. And just a case in point, Mr. Speaker, when I was in the industry trying to establish certain insurance options here on the island for my previous employer in the private sector, I went back and forth with this division for a year, and they had me filling out forms five different ways, coming back and saying, put a, you know, dot this I, and, oh, no, you're not supposed to dot that I, you're supposed to cross this T. And it wasn't until I became Oversight Chairman and I had conversations with others throughout the industry that I found that there is some consistency in the inconsistency within that particular division. And so, you know, one of the things that I've always tried to make it a point of is, as we address these challenges and as they come to light, we definitely need to work together on fixing them. We definitely need to fund the improvements to them, and if we're going to be putting money into it, which is something that I'm not going to oppose at all, being the Oversight Chairman, I definitely want to make sure the outcomes are going to be there if we're going to be spending any new dollars. So I thank the mover of this legislation for helping us find the resources, and I also look forward to working with him and making sure that the outcomes are going to be what everybody's expecting when we pump in another 100 grand into an operation that has a lot of issues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Nicholas. I understand. Senator Blas, you wish to be heard on this, on the main motion? Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, while I stand in support of this legislation, I appreciate the dialogue that occurred, and they're both right. And I'm glad that there is a compromise and that we can move forward on this. However, there is on Page 4, basically subsection C, that starts on line 4. My concern here is relative to basically the amount that the fees can be adjusted per annum, at the amount of basically about 15%. And I would hope that maybe the author could yield to the question with regards to how we arrived at that figure, that percentage rate, so that I can better understand, you know, where, how that basically got there.
And I'll yield, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Is that your question?
Yes, sir, the 15%. How do we get to that?
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And thank you very much to our good colleague. Mr. Speaker, this was also brought up earlier by Senator Espaldon on how it came up, and really, there was no science to it, you know, and I admit, it was a number that, looking at the fees, looking at the types of the industry that, you know, that this is, we 've come up with that number of 15%, not to exceed 15%. And I explained earlier that we, you know, we should be able to really have the confidence and trust of not just the Commissioner, because we don't leave it solely with the Commissioner, whoever he is or she is. We are, you know, ensuring that the Commissioner, in consultation with, with consultation and approval, with members of the Banking and Insurance Board, who we here in this body confirm, will make the, would make the right decision. And I know that we just confirmed a member who was part of the industry. I think, I believe that's, you know, that's a requirement, that they have to be part of the industry to be part of the board. And so we say 15%, you know, of course, they have that latitude between 1 to 15 on what they need, you know, what they need to do to adjust the rates, and if it's over that 15%, then it goes to that triple A process. So really, just to summarize, there was really no formula, specific formula we've used to come up with that.
Is that satisfactory, Senator Blas?
Well, you know, Mr. Speaker, and I grant it, and I appreciate, and I respect, and I, you know, I know that with the current Commissioner, you know, that there won't be this attempt to be able to increase these fees up to 15% per annum, but when you start to look at that, you know, in seven to eight short years, you can go up to basically 100% of what you're paying for today. I'm a little concerned with this. Can I ask, just for a short recess, I am working on some language that I'm going to propose as an amendment. I recognize that we need to give them the latitude and the flexibility of being able to adjust the fees accordingly, and that, you know, there is already a mechanism should those fees need to be really looked at. I just like to be able to propose some language, and really, it's basically to lower this amount.
Recession granted.
Thank you.[1254.53] I think, I believe that's the, you know, that's a requirement, that they have to be part of the industry to be part of the board. And so, we say 15 percent, you know, of course, they have that latitude between one to 15 on what they need, you know, what they need to do to adjust the rates. And if it's over that 15 percent, then it goes to that AAA process. So, really, just to summarize, there was really no formula, specific formula, we've used to come up with that.
Is that satisfactory, Senator Blas?
Well, you know, Mr. Speaker, and I grant it, and I appreciate, and I respect, and I, you know, I know that with the current commissioner, you know, that there won't be this attempt to be able to increase these fees up to 15 percent per annum. But when you start to look at that, you know, in seven to eight short years, you can go up to basically 100 percent of what you're paying for today. I'm a little concerned with this. Can I ask, just for a short recess, I am working on some language that winter proposes an amendment. I recognize that we need to give them the latitude and the flexibility of being able to adjust the fees accordingly, and that, you know, there is already a mechanism should those fees need to be really looked at. I just like to be able to propose some language, and really, it's basically to lower this amount.
Recession granted.
Thank you.
Senator Blas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I beg your indulgence, and I'd like to be able to yield the rest of my time to a previous speaker on this, that we had collaborated with regards to an amendment that's going to be proposed. Would that be of...
The Chair understands, and without any objection from anyone, I will allow Senator Espaldón a second.
Thank you, sir.
Ability to address an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, at this time, we'd like to, I'd like to propose an amendment, move an amendment, and that would be to Section C on Page 4. And the amendment has been passed out. One of the concerns I had earlier when I rose is that the bill as originally written would allow the board to go ahead and raise fees, not exceed, not to exceed 15 percent. However, I would like to at least perhaps move a little more cautiously on this, and at the very least, provide for a public hearing, so that the stakeholders within the communities that's affected by this board will at least be able to hear and have a say in any proposed fee increases. So, the amendment I would like to make would be after their, excuse me, on line 7 on Page 4, after word "annum," and then the new language will include, quote, "The commissioner shall conduct a public hearing on any proposed fee increases not to exceed 15 percent pursuant to the open government law, and shall transmit the findings and recommendations of the public hearing to the Guam Legislature and the governor prior to the implementation of the proposed fee increases." And again, that's just to make sure that all the stakeholders have an opportunity to hear what the increases are going to be, and be able to have a say on them. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the Espaldón Amendment, any senator wish to be heard on the Espaldón Amendment? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, that's, I support the amendment. I think, you know, even if we wanted to just, you know, give them that flexibility, but I agree, you know, you give them the opportunity to bring the stakeholders in, conduct the public hearing, and then also transmit the findings to both the legislature and the governor, I think that's a win-win. So, thank you very much.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the Espaldón Amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the Espaldón Amendment? Anybody objecting? Senator Uggan, did I see your hand go up? Okay. Any objection? Any senator wish to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion? On the main motion? If not, the author is welcome. Any objection to sending the bill down to the third reading file for voting today, or for the voting file? Any objection? Seeing none. Madam Speaker, should I take a short recess? Back in session, we now arm Bill 169, introduced by Speaker Judith Warren-Patt.
Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to place 169-33COR as introduced into the third reading file, and if I could briefly discuss it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Mr. Speaker, Bill 169 currently is currently before this body, proposes to allow what we call interim financing for several capital improvement projects at the University of Guam. And if you recall, last year, USDA had made a presentation to UOG base specifically on the construction of the Student Services Center and the construction of the Engineering Annex Building. The United States Department of Agriculture has required that, as a condition to enter into USDA loan, the Endowment Foundation has to ascertain an interim financing for the construction of both buildings. And using, of course, the words of President Robert Underwood, he was saying that this has been a long and difficult process to move forward in this new era for the university. And in summary, with the passage of this bill into law, the university will be able to pursue the construction of these facilities that will change the institution forever. Now, what we expect, then, is that the capital improvement project would actually take four years to complete. So, thus, the interim financing, then, should not exceed the four years. And after the completion of the construction phase of the project, USDA will assume the loan, and the term of the loan shall not exceed 36 years. But the total number of years for both the interim and the financing cannot exceed 40 years. One of the conditions of the legislation is that both the interim financing and the USDA loan should not, and this was something we were working really hard with them, because I didn't want to add additional monies, so we wanted to make sure that it should not exceed the annual appropriation of $1,158,283 that was authorized by Item Q1 of Section 22425 of Title V Guam Code annotated. And it also sets the interest cap at 3.5 for the USDA loan. However, you know, months, you know, it took us to do this, but there's still a few more amendments now that after the bill has, you know, been introduced and heard, that I'd like to make a couple of amendments then to Bill 169-33. The first is, if you'll follow with me, because you have a total of three, to add a section that's part of Public Law 31-277, to add a Section 2C6 of Public Law 31-277. And what it would read is that the leaseback agreement shall require that the university be responsible for the procurement and oversight of the design and construction associated with the project, or projects authorized to be financed pursuant to this section. The lease and the leaseback agreements shall be valid and binding obligations of the university and the foundation, enforceable in accordance with their respective terms, and there shall be no power to terminate or declare now and void any such agreement for procurement violations or any other reason or reasons. The university is authorized to grant right-of-way access to the construction site and building, and access to utility easement. The right-of-way and easement access shall remain in effect during the entire term of the lease and leaseback. So, that's the very first amendment, is to ensure that UOG will continue to have access to the building during the entire term of the lease and leaseback agreement, no matter how, whatever the sign, how the financing standing is. So, that's the first amendment.
On the first WAMPAD amendment, Senator Blas, I saw your hand go up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it's not, I do support the amendment. I just, some clarification, I noticed here that we're going to, we're going to basically, shall be valid and binding obligations of the university and the foundation. The question is, does this body have the authority to be able to bind this, to make this kind of agreement with the foundation?
Right now, at the time when they were, when we first did Public Law 31-277, is that the university itself could not just go out by itself to do this, because they receive funding from the government of Guam, they have federal funds as well. So, but the only ones who have basically some funding through their fundraisers is the foundation.
I understand that, and I appreciate it, and I recognize it. Again, I'm just concerned whether or not we can legally do this to a private organization. And maybe there should be some language in here that shows that they recognize that we're giving, you know, they agreed to this by me. I just don't want this to be able to be precedent-setting, if you will, otherwise down the road, or that down the road, the foundation and its makeup, you know, they come back and they say, you had no legal grounds to do that. And so, I'm just, I understand.
I understand, and so, she's agreed to yield to that question, and allow her answer. If she's unable to answer it, I saw Senator Nicholas stand, and he may have the answer for it.
Okay, and I appreciate it. I just want some clarification on that.
All right. In Public Law 31-277Q, where it says how much will be paid out of, you know, the various funds, it says also here, the language, that we would then be paying it for a certain obligation amount for a Student Services Center and the annex as a source of payment to the University of Guam Capital Improvement Fund, for the purpose of paying rental payments due under the lease/leaseback agreements with the university endowment foundation for a term of 40 years. So, what they asked then, that by, the need to put this language in, is to have further language other than what we have in 31-277, and this was the language that was requested by USDA.
And does that answer your question? I didn't think so.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker, on the question. Point of information on the question, Mr. Speaker. So, the retiring speaker is asking if we can bind the foundation, make it enforceable. And actually, it's important to understand the different moving parts. I can see how it could get a little, a little...
Pursuant to the open government law and shall transmit the findings and recommendations of the public hearing to the Guam Legislature and the Governor prior to the implementation of the proposed fee increases. And again, that's just to make sure that all the stakeholders have an opportunity to hear what the increases are going to be and be able to have a say on them. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the Espaldon Amendment, any senator wish to be heard on the Espaldon Amendment? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I support the amendment. I think, you know, even if we wanted to just, you know, give them that flexibility, but I agree, you know, you give them the opportunity to bring the stakeholders in, conduct the public hearing, and then also transmit the findings to both the legislature and the Governor, I think that's a win-win. So, thank you very much.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the Espaldon Amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the Espaldon Amendment? Anybody objecting? Senator Uggins, did I see your hand go up?
No. Senator. You guys are talking. I'm expecting. Um, and for. Thank you.
Okay. Any objection? Any senator wish to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion? On the main motion? If not, the author is welcome. Any objection to sending the bill down to the third reading file for voting today or for the voting file? Any objection? Seeing none. Back in session, we now arm Bill 169, introduced by Speaker Judith Warren-Patt.
Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to place 169-33COR as introduced into the third reading file, and if I could briefly discuss it.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Mr. Speaker, Bill 169 currently is currently before this body, proposes to allow what we call interim financing for several capital improvement projects at the University of Guam. And if you recall, last year USDA had made a presentation to UOG base specifically on the construction of the Student Services Center and the construction of the Engineering Annex Building. The United States Department of Agriculture has required that as a condition to enter into USDA loan, the Endowment Foundation has to ascertain an interim financing for the construction of both buildings. And using, of course, the words of President Robert Underwood, he was saying that this has been a long and difficult process to move forward in this new era for the university. And in summary, with the passage of this bill into law, the university will be able to pursue the construction of these facilities that would change the institution forever. Now, what we expect then is that the capital improvement project would actually take four years to complete. So thus, the interim financing then should not exceed the four years. And after the completion of the construction phase of the project, USDA will assume the loan, and the term of the loan shall not exceed 36 years. But the total number of years for both the interim and the financing cannot exceed 40 years. One of the conditions of the legislation is that both the interim financing and the USDA loan should not, and this was something we were working really hard with them because I didn't want to add additional monies. So, we wanted to make sure that it should not exceed the annual appropriation of $1,158,283 that was authorized by Item Q1 of Section 22425 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated. And it also sets the interest cap at 3.5 for the USDA loan. However, you know, months, you know, it took us to do this, but there's still a few more amendments now that after the bill has, you know, been introduced and heard, that I'd like to make a couple of amendments then to Bill 169-33. The first is, if you'll follow with me, because you have a total of three, to add a section that's part of Public Law 31-277, to add a Section 2C6 of Public Law 31-277. And what it would read is that the lease-back agreement shall require that the university be responsible for the procurement and oversight of the design and construction associated with the project or projects authorized to be financed pursuant to this section. The lease and the lease-back agreements shall be valid and binding obligations of the university and the foundation, enforceable in accordance with their respective terms, and there shall be no power to terminate or declare null and void any such agreement for procurement violations or any other reason or reasons. The university is authorized to grant right-of-way access to the construction site and building and access to utility easement. The right-of-way and easement access shall remain in effect during the entire term of the lease and lease-back. So, that's the very first amendment, is to ensure that UOG will continue to have access to the building during the entire term of the lease and lease-back agreement, no matter how, whatever the sign, how the financing standing is. So, that's the first amendment.
On the first WAMPAD amendment, Senator Blas, I saw your hand go up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it's not, I do support the amendment. Just some clarification. I noticed here that we're going to, we're going to basically, shall be valid and binding obligations of the university and the foundation. The question is, does this body have the authority to be able to bind this, to make this kind of agreement with the foundation?
Right now, at the time when they were, when we first did Public Law 31-277, is that the university itself could not just go out by itself to do this, because they receive funding from the government of Guam, they have federal funds as well. So, but the only ones who have basically some funding through their fundraisers is the foundation.
I understand that, and I appreciate it, and I recognize that. Again, I'm just concerned whether or not we can legally do this to a private organization. And maybe there should be some language in here that shows that they recognize that we're giving, you know, they agreed to this by me.
Uh, wait.
I just don't want this to be able to be precedent-setting, if you will, otherwise down the road, or that down the road, the foundation and its makeup, you know, they come back and they say, you had no legal grounds to do that.
Well, the, uh...
And so, I'm just, I understand.
I understand. And so, she's agreed to yield to that question?
Yes.
And allow her answer. If she's unable to answer it, I saw Senators Nicholas and, and he may have the answer for it.
Okay, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
I just want some clarification on that.
All right. In Public Law 31-277Q, where it says how much will be paid out of, you know, the various funds, it says also here, the language, that we would then be paying it for a certain obligation amount for a Student Services Center and the annex as a source of payment to the University of Guam Capital Improvement Fund for the purpose of paying rental payments due under the lease/leaseback agreements with the university Endowment Foundation for a term of 40 years. So, what they ask then that by, the need to put this language in is to have further language other than what we have in 31-277. And this was the language that was requested by USDA.
And does that answer your question? I didn't think so.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker, on the question. Point of information on the question, Mr. Speaker. So, the retiring speaker is asking if we can bind the foundation, make it enforceable. And actually, it's important to understand the different moving parts. I can see how it could get a little confusing, or how it needs to be clarified a bit better. What this amendment would, what this amendment says is that we're binding the foundation to the lease/leaseback agreements. What the bill does is it authorizes a lease/leaseback agreement, but the university, the Endowment Foundation, needs to actually agree to that particular agreement. So, we're not creating the agreement, we're not mandating that they agree to the agreement, we're just saying that when they do, it will be binding. And so, if you read the language on the amendment, the second sentence, "The lease and leaseback agreements shall be valid and binding obligations of the university and the foundation, enforceable in accordance of their respective terms." So, if the university and the Endowment Foundation do come to an agreement, a lease/leaseback agreement, to build this annex and to build the student center, that agreement will be binding. We're not forcing them to enter into an agreement, but we are providing them with the funding mechanisms if they do, and we are saying, if you do, it is going to be binding, but it's up to you. And so, we're not forcing the Endowment to do anything, but if they choose to, we're saying that it is binding after you do.
Is that clear, Senator Blas?
You know, Mr. Speaker, and I would hope that would be the case, and I appreciate that, and maybe that, I just don't read it that way. I, again, I just, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure that it is enforceable. And maybe, maybe there's some additional language that can be added to that.
I think the explanation given by Senators Nicholas is that we're giving the two entities this authority.
I understood.
If they decide that they're going to take it, great. If not, then nobody has any money.
Okay. And so, again, I appreciate it. Let me sit down and digest this a little bit more, this is the first time I saw the amendment, okay? I don't want to, I don't want to impede the progress of this. Again, as I stated, I am in support of it. I just have the concern with regards to what, that basically, that binding nature of it, and whether or not we have the legal ability to do so.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, you may continue. Any other senator wish to be heard on the First Amendment of the Speaker? Senator Tom Attah?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If the mover of the amendment would yield, I'm just a little confused by this. On the sixth line down, where it says basically that this, the agreement that's entered into between the university and the foundation, "There shall be no power to terminate or declare null and void any such agreement for procurement violations or any other reasons or any other reason or reasons." And this, that we cannot declare for procurement violations, maybe if you can kind of clarify what that means.
Madam Speaker?
Well, the, and then, on the very top, of course, is that, what it is, is that it's giving the full responsibility for procurement and oversight of the design and construction. So, it'll be the university then who'll be totally responsible for this. And what, at least my understanding, there's told to me, is that because they are the ones, not GSA, that's putting out this, I mean, putting out the procurement or the RFP for this particular project, that there should not or will not be any, that there will be any one party, I suppose, that will declare whatever agreement that they have for their, for procurement, now or void. That's the only understanding that I have, only because they're doing it, not GSA.
But the procurement protest will not come from either the university or the endowment. The procurement challenge will come from a private corporation.
But it will be them, between them and the university.
And so...
Not them and GSA or the entire government.
Where did this language come from?
This actually came, again, in discussion between the university and USDA.
And did anybody transmit this language that we can look at that might help assuage some of the concerns that are being posed?
Other than just the way we've put it together as an amendment.
I understand.
I mean, you're talking about...
Like transmit a letter that's saying, "We would be willing to give you this loan with these provisions enacted into law."
Wait, I can go back and check there's, I know, because I do have one email for an amendment that asked for, but I can ask specifically for this amendment then. So, can I get a brief recess?
Well, have a brief recess.
I'd like to withdraw my amendment.
Thank you very much. All right. So, on the WAMPAD amendment as introduced, anyone wish to be heard? Senator Underwood?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to proffer an amendment to delete, after, okay, if you go down the following, one, two, three, four, five. On the fifth line, it says, "Enforceable in accordance with their respective terms." I would put a period there and delete, "And there shall be no power to terminate or declare null and void any such agreement for procurement violations or any other reason or reasons." Period. All of that would be deleted, and the rest would be kept.
Is that amendment clear to the members of the legislature? All right. On the Underwood amendment... amendment, any senator wish to be heard? On the Underwood amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any objection to the Underwood amendment?
No objection.
Any objection to the Underwood amendment striking those two lines?
As I.
Thank you. On the Juan Pat amended amendment as amended by the Underwood amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any senator wish to be heard on the amended amendment? If not, is there an objection to the amendment? An objection has been raised. All those in favor of the amended amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Passes. Thank you. It's a new section.
It's a new section. I spoke to legal counsel and they would make it as a new section. The Second Amendment actually takes language from Public Law 31-277, and actually what it would do was just to strengthen, of course, the language in terms of identification of the funds also from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund, and that is the actual language that is in Public Law 31-277, where it does say that in Q, that not to exceed the certain dollar amount from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund in the amounts of and for purposes set forth. And then the very first one listed was the University of Guam of 1.1 million dollars. So we just want to put in that language because currently I know that the university does receive some funding from, like for the LG Building from the Guam Highway Funds and also for now for these particular facilities, it will be the Territorial Education Facilities Fund or other available revenues. So it's just to add that word and to be consistent with Public Law 31-277. The second one?
It's the long one.
That has two pages, to add 2K of Public Law 31-277. So it's taking the actual language of K and it's only to add funds from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund.
Is that clear with all the members? It's the long two back-to-back amendment, and though it's a long sheet, there's actually only five or six words that are added. The amendment's only to put in funds from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund. Senator Gloss.
Maybe the author of the amendment can yield to the question with regards to, okay, it says funds from the TEFF. How much are we talking about?
For, it's 1,158,283 dollars. And that's, if you recall, that was the bill, of course, 31-277, that we listed that several projects from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund will include that for the university. It also had a dollar amount of 278,000 for GCC for building 100, the DNA Laboratory of the Guam Community College. It also has the public library school system, the Department of Education for the renovation and construction of a new Simon Sanchez High School. So it's just a long list, about eight of them. The very first one, of course, was the University of Guam. And so, and it did say that not to exceed 8,500,000 dollars from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund in the amounts of and for purposes set forth in this subsection. So it's just to add that language now to bring 31-77 up to date.
Mrs. Speaker, I bring this question because in a previous discussion on a previous bill that this body just, the bill previous, there was that whole discussion whether or not, if we do this now, how, what does this do to the budget that we had just passed?
Actually, you know, is that whether we put it in or not, it's still in Public Law 31-277. It just reinforces, you know, what was in one law to make sure that it's consistent in this law and...
The amendment is proposed, proposes to add the funds from the TEFF to that reservation source.
I think what the senator is asking is the current appropriation of the TEFF, did it already take into account this 1.1 million dollars that would be going to?
That's right.
Well, I know that for some already, they have. The university hasn't started yet to do it. They got the loan last year, or was it early this year? And I know that UOG, I mean GCC has already started the renovation of building 100 and the DNA Lab at the Guam Community College, so they've started to do that. I do know that according to one of our colleagues who was able to get a text from a former colleague of ours from the front office saying that they're going to move forward with the Simon Sanchez High School, the RFP will be going out on November 5th, and that's number six on this list. And so far, those are the only ones that...
I think we can resolve the senator's question if we just take a short recess, and we'll clear with OFB if this already has been taken into account in the current budget.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, review of 3366 of the budget law. It is, it is part of the line, 1.158 million dollars. So that allays my concern, my, you know, that this was not taken away from, so I appreciate it.
So on the Juan Pat amendment, any objection? It's the long one, just to put the TEFF in there. There's no objection to it. The speaker has one more amendment.
The last amendment would be to amend again item Q of 22425, Title V of GCA to read. And actually, what it is, is the length, the way it is, is in the codes, and it says continuously appropriated, but rather to delete appropriated to reserved annually, because what we do in the legislature is that then we appropriate annually. But I do have a correspondence letter with, from GIDA and from bond counsel, and I'll go ahead and read it to you. It says, "One, bond counsel emphasis that we need the law to refrain from including languages that states continuously appropriate as this will convert the lease obligation to an actual debt of the government with debt ceiling impact. We must keep the language flexible, which is why we request new language to state continuously reserve." Then two, in our review of Public Law 32120 and 32121, which authorized the school financing to include Simon Sanchez, bond counsel states that this will not impact this financing RFP, but makes further emphasis that this new lease will not be an actual debt of the government. And that's the language that was requested for us to change, and hence, of course, this amendment.
On this amendment by Speaker Juan Pat, do I understand Senators Nicholas you have wished to be heard? You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So just to clarify, the way this works operationally is that this particular amendment is important for us to make sure the money is going to be there when we actually appropriate it come budget time. So in order for this financing to not count towards the debt ceiling of the government of Guam, it cannot be a continuous appropriation, which is how it's written in the existing law, because a continuous appropriation is indicative of ongoing debt. Instead, what this has to be is a reserve language, that the amount is reserved, it's set aside, and then appropriated each and every single time the budget cycle comes around, and that would make it be qualified as a municipal lease type of payment. So that would not be counted towards our debt ceiling. So this language is necessary for us to make sure the money's going to be there so that when we appropriate it at the start of every fiscal year, the funds are there for us to be able to actually make the lease payments.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on this third amendment by Speaker Juan Pat? Any senator wish to be heard? If not, is there an objection to this third amendment? Seeing no hands, no, and hearing no objection. Man Speaker, do you have any further? Any senator on the main motion, any senator wish to be heard? Senator Nicholas on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to highlight some key points here in the bill that make it something that we need to actually be very, very interested in. I fully support this measure, and I find it to be a very, a very effective way for us to not only finance these projects, but to consider financing other projects going forward that are of critical need in our community, particularly with respect to the building of new schools and how it can tie into the existing structures in place right now in the Department of Education. This bill, the way it operatively works, is we're specifying an amount, and we're specifying an interest rate, and we're specifying a duration for which we're going to be able to go out and pay for a new student services center and a new engineering annex up at the University of Guam. What makes this very, very unique, there's multiple levels, so I'm going to try and make it as clear as possible. The first is that the primary debt is going to be taken on by the University of Guam Endowment Foundation. They're the ones who are going to be borrowing from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the USDA, and when they borrow from them, they are then going to pass through that cost to us here at the local level. We already appropriated the money and identified the funding source, so this isn't new debt. This is existing commitments that we've already made with respect to revenue. So it's not like we're going to be borrowing for a new and unanticipated amount. It's already included in our current budget. So what happens is the debt is actually to the University of Guam Endowment Foundation, but the Endowment Foundation at UOG makes an agreement with the University of Guam that the University of Guam will lease the facility from them at the same cost of the debt that they took on to build the facilities. So the debt's on the Endowment Foundation, it's not on the hook of the government of Guam, but we are committing to pay for it. Not only are we committing to pay for it, but we are setting very strict terms and conditions on what kind of a payment is acceptable to our people. We're saying we're not going to pay more than 3.5% interest, which is an incredibly great rate. We're saying we're not going to pay more than 1.158 million dollars. So by limiting the interest rate and the amount, we're basically saying you can only go out and borrow that much. And then we're saying we're not going to pay for this for more than a period of 40 years. So contrary to the way we've probably been borrowing in the past, this is a very smart way for us to consider how we should be borrowing going forward into the future. Specify exactly how much we're willing to spend. Specify exactly what interest rate we're willing to spend at. Specify the duration that we're willing to go for on these, on this debt. But more specifically, work with a third-party entity, so that entity is the one that's taking on the obligation. So we can emulate this example in our Department of Education because DOE does have its own endowment foundation as well. That endowment foundation can probably go and work with the U.S. Department of Agriculture also, or other lending agencies, to be able to finance the rebuilding of new schools. And we can do the exact same terms and conditions using the Territorial Education Facilities Fund for us to go out and build these new facilities. This is something that we probably should have considered instead of going out and doing those very expensive leases on those very old buildings that were renovated up in Tezen, because this is a mechanism by which we can actually go out, finance new facilities, but not put our government on the hook for the debt because it'll be, it'll be tagged to a third-party entity. So I'm very excited to see this thing work out. I think it's only fitting that our university is not only piloting this initiative through its endowment foundation, but actually working with our body here to be able to construct the necessary legislative mechanisms by which that can happen. And if it's successful, then it will provide for us a very excellent starting point from which we can go out and evaluate how we can, how we can do the same to get new schools into our Department of Education, many of which are reaching their, the end of their useful lives. We're setting, we're setting the terms and conditions on how much we're going to pay, what interest rate, what duration, and the debt isn't even going to be on our names, it's going to be on, under the names of the endowment foundation. I'm very, I'm just really, really excited and proud of the University of Guam for crafting this mechanism, and I very much look forward to it being a success and being put to future and greater use for the benefit of our people. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? We'll take a short recess. Senator Blas will be next on.
Oh, Blas will be next, okay.
The Speaker has asked that we set her bill to the side and go to the next bill. Senator, a speech show?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'm certainly ready to ask for the body's consideration for Bill one-seventy-one dash three-three, and I move to be placed in the third reading file with some discussion.
Any objection?
This bill, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, is an act to mandate that the Bureau of Statistics and Plans collect data on the amount and type of all produce and fish imported to Guam. Such information to be reported quarterly by type of produce and fish on both the B S P and Department of Agriculture's websites, and they require additional data from government, government agencies on the procurement of local produce and locally caught fish. And so I certainly want to ask for the body's consideration and support for this bill. The genesis of this bill is that it builds upon a twenty-year-old law that was first written by former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson. And his original law provides for some procurement considerations for the Departments of Education, the Department of Corrections, the Department of Youth Affairs, Guam Memorial Hospital, and those agencies that provide mills to, whether it's to public school students, or to DOC inmates, or D Y A's clients, or the hospital's patients. And so that if there's any opportunity for these agencies to buy local, what former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson did many, many years ago would require that those local produce be purchased. Now, we understand that over the years, these agencies have gone from having these mills provided for by government employees to private sector employees. And so they're, we know that in the case of D O E, they have to work through a prime vendor, and so we see what those challenges are year after year. Well, I was able to hold a roundtable and a public hearing on this initiative. And the, what I want to do with this bill, Mr. Speaker, is we're, we're constantly hearing these agencies say they want to buy local, they want to buy local. Well, unless we provide for a collection of how much they're actually buying on a quarterly basis, we can't really yet determine if that's, if they could do more, or if they're doing enough. And so also by doing this bill, we're requiring that we start to quantify how much of these fresh produce are being imported to the island. And so by having that information, the farmers through the Department of Agriculture, the Farmers Co-op can start to recognize that the demand exists for those certain fruits or vegetables, and they can start planting to meet those demands. What we also did with this bill, along with providing the data collection, we also are building upon former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson's bill, which required that these agencies put in their budget digest their plans to buy local. What we got to do more than just having them put in their budget digest what their plans to buy local produce, more, more needs to be done so that we're requesting that they include a specific line item for local produce and fish purchases in the Budget Digest Incorporated in the respective agency's annual budget. And I, I wanted to put this in, and I did, offer this to the body as a solution to what we're hearing from the Department of, Department of Education alone. We're hearing from them that because they have a prime vendor, they have to meet with these, they have to meet these very restrictive federal guidelines for the food nutrition guidelines in order to have these items reimbursed. We have encountered some situations where it's, one point they were buying watermelons with seeds, but then out of the blue, they stopped getting watermelons with seeds and they went to require seedless watermelons, making the case that they want to, they don't want to give watermelons with seeds to elementary kids. And so I didn't want to argue with that. At that point, I asked them, well, couldn't they, they provide watermelons with seeds for the middle and high school kids? And they said, well, it was a district-wide decision. Another area of frustration was they were interested in purchasing corn from a local farmer, but yet they, D O E claimed that they didn't have enough staff to peel or to husk the corn. The local farmer was willing to deliver the corn husked. Then they said, well, if you deliver it husked, then you're, you're, you're processing it, so maybe public health might have a problem with that. But nobody really confirmed if public health really would have a problem with that. And at the roundtable hearing, Senator Spaldan made the point that if you're just husking corn, then you're not processing it. And so we think that it's a matter of a need to have them communicate more. They, they went from, at one point, accepting cherry tomatoes, and then all of a sudden they went to grape tomatoes. And so it's just these kinds of instances where unless we, we require that this data be done on a quarterly basis so that we can have a report card of what these agencies are actually doing, unless we can determine that in one month they're buying a hundred pounds of tomato, for example, then the following month it may drop to fifty, well, now you would have the Director of Agriculture have data to go back to this agency and say, why did the, why did the procurement of that particular vegetable go down? Maybe there was a couple of reasons. One, maybe they, it was an issue with procurement, or maybe there's an issue of supply, or maybe there's an issue that that particular fruit or vegetable is not produced during that season. What this bill would also do is require that they communicate more, and so that these agencies can project also on a quarterly basis what they believe their future procurement needs are going to be. And so by doing that, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, we provide a, a, a opportunity for, in the case of D O E, to start planning their mills around what those seasonal fruits and vegetables are. And so in terms of the staffing required to do this, the customs and quarantine, they already have, they're compiling the information. This information was, was done as a standard operating procedure when the, when the P P Q, the Plan Quarantine and Protection, was a function of the Department of Agriculture, and when a previous legislature moved that to the Department of Corrections. So they're, they're, they're compiling this data, and they're giving it to the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, but we just want to provide some kind of, we want to institutionalize that process so we can, we can do these three things. We can, we can determine how much of these produce are being brought into the island. We can determine how much they're being bought from these agencies. And then we can also ask these agencies to provide a upcoming projection of what their needs are going to be. And so I, while this bill may look very simple on the surface, I think it's very significant in that, that all the decisions with respect to how we're going to wake this sleeping giant up can be data-driven. And unless, like I said, unless we have this kind of data, and unless these agencies start requesting the legislature by way of a line item budget to procure directly from these local farmers and fishermen, we're not, we're going to continue to wonder how we can do better in the area of agriculture, and how we can do better in the area of having the government procure from our local farmers and fishermen. So I ask our colleagues for support of this bill, and I'm prepared to answer any questions they may have, and I'm prepared to accept any amendments they may have to make this bill better if they so fit, they see fit to it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Just for clarification for the clerks' purposes, it's Bill one-seventy-one, as amended by the committee.
Yeah, this was the version that was reported out of committee, so it was already adopted by the committee. So it was already accepted by the committee, so I just moved to place in the voting file. I'm not making any additional amendments after the committee report.
All right. Any Senator wish to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion? Any Senator wish to be heard on the main motion? If not, you may close. Any objections to sending it down? Seeing none. Madam Speaker, do I understand one-seventy-four is set aside also? You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place one-seventy-three dash thirty-three C O R as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development in the third reading file, and I'd like to just briefly discuss it.
Please.
One-seventy-four.
There being no objection to?
One-seventy-four. Thank you. Under current market conditions, some or all of the government of Guam Under current market conditions, some or all of the government of Guam's obligation with respect to the Guam Education Financing Foundation Certificates of Participation, which is our Guam Public School Facilities Project, Series 2006A, 2006B, and 2008. Collectively, the 2006 and 2008 Certificates of Participation can be refinanced with a tax-exempt and/or taxable obligations at a lower interest rate. Capitalizing on these lower interest rates will reduce annual payments due to the Guam Public School System. Further, refinancing the 2006, 2008 Certificates of Participation will not involve public indebtedness as defined in 48 U.S.C. subsection 1423A, subsection 11 of the Organic Act of Guam, as this refinancing does not count towards limits to public indebtedness. The bill will allow refinancing of the debt related to the Guam Educational Financing Foundation schools, allowing for a realization of a one-time savings of these COPs, which are paid by the Compact Impact Funds, over which only the Governor of Guam has sole authority. And to explain the refinancing process for our colleagues is on Certificates of Participation. Certificates of Participation, or COPs, are multi-year obligations documented with a lease agreement that does not constitute indebtedness under section 11 of the Organic Act of Guam. COPs are set up like bonds, however, with inclusion of a non-appropriation clause. The legislature is not bound to make future appropriations for payment or rent, or other financial obligations beyond the current fiscal year, and the governmental less-lease obligation under the lease is in the nature of a current expense. In this case, we are refinancing the 2006 and 2008 COPs to lower our interest rates, which currently it is 4.5%, and they're now looking at 2%, resulting in a savings of $200,000 annually in debt service payment through the COP maturity. The process to refinance COPs will include securing a bond credit rating on the revenues designated to pay the COPs, and then marketing the proposed COPs to potential investors. Once investors are secured, new lease financing documents reflecting the new payment amount will be finalized and signed by the developer and the Governor of Guam. This process is the same process for bonds. In page three, lines 17 to 20 of Bill 174, clearly states that the refinancing considers both the 2006 and 2008 COPs. The particular facilities that we're talking about here for the 2006 and 2008 COPs were initially issued to build and furnish four schools: the Okudu High School, Adakau Elementary School, Lee Guan Terrace Elementary School, and the Astumbo Middle Schools.
Can I have everybody take their discussion outside, please? I'm having a hard time hearing the speaker.
Do I need to repeat that part? The 2006 and 2008 COPs were initially issued to build and furnish the Okudu High School, Adakau Elementary School, Lee Guan Terrace Elementary School, and the Astumbo Middle Schools. The government and Guam taxpayers' potential savings, these bonds are scheduled for maturity in 11 years, or by 2026. Therefore, total gross savings are estimated at $2.3 million due to rounding. They propose, what I had proposed here, and purpose basically, is that because these COPs are paid by Compact Impact Funds, over which only the governor has sole authority, I'd like to, of course, respectfully recommend that the governor use these savings to help our educational institutions. Hence, of course, when we were working on this bill, we were hoping that then we would be able to, that when they're refinanced, that the money goes into the general fund, that we would be able to introduce legislations to specifically appropriate the monies then for our educational facilities. Knowing, of course, that, and having worked with your staff, and I thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for, you know, allowing them to work with me on this, and the language of this, and more importantly, you know, just trying to make sure that this, at first, whether we could do it through appropriations, could we do it with a resolution? And I had heard from them is that former Speaker Ben Pangolinen had done the same thing and tried to do it through a resolution to the governor. And some, of course, of their requests from the resolution were granted by the governor, and of course, the rest, the governor decided what he wanted to do. Knowing, of course, that since he has full control over Compact Impact monies for health, education, and public safety, the best then that I feel we could do in not only then authorizing the government to go out and refinance this with GEEF is that I wanted to put a language in, now a new language instead, in the intent. And you should all have a copy, and it says, "Ilehasutran Guahan acknowledges that the savings captured through the refinancing of these COPs are paid by Compact Impact Funds, over which only the governor has sole authority." "Ilehasutran Guahan encourages and recommends" that the Governor of Guam, to the Governor of Guam, "to use the savings to help with preventive and routine maintenance for DOE, GDOE school facilities, for the construction of the GCC Maintenance and Wellness Center, and to UOG for capital improvement projects in preparation for the WASC accreditation visit and their aquaculture and aquatic restoration projects." These were basically what we were looking at. Originally, bills were already prepared, you know, to be filed, as a matter of fact, today, and we were working to try to get your committee to hear it. And of course, your chief financial guy came to me just before, right, you know, after lunch, of course, and had recommended that the best that we could do, other than what former Speaker Ben had done with the resolution, is just go ahead and just say that, you know, acknowledging the fact that, yes, it is the governor who has full authority over Compact Impact Funds. And we know that they are usually for health, education, and public safety. That we're appealing to him is to consider this. DOE is truly in need of these monies because, as we all heard, is that Simon Sanchez had received so many demerits that could conceivably force the school to be closed. And then there are other maintenance that they would need throughout their schools because the RFP for that $100 million that we're waiting for to, for either renovation or the building of a new Simon Sanchez High School, and then to use the remaining amount of money for all of the schools is just at least to be able to avert any closure from any demerits to help them with that. We all know too is that GCC has been very diligent in terms, and very aggressive in going out to the federal government to seek, find funding for all of her buildings that she has managed to build new and or renovate. And this is basically one, the last, almost, hopefully, the second to the last is the Wellness Center for the Guam Community College. And she had basically requested that, she's not asking for the full amount, and this is something I'd like to discuss with, you know, the governor, of course, is that, you know, she would, you know, find the difference to be able then, again, to build this Wellness Center. The last is, and I know our colleague from Timuning had attempted, and she was, of course, you know, with deep, you know, sadness to be able to send her bill back in hopes, in the hopes of wanting to help at least the University of Guam, to get them started, at least, with the air conditioning ducts before the WASC team, you know, would come to Guam. But, and she reiterated, of course, in trying to work with you at the time, to put in about $1 million for capital improvement projects in that preparation for the WASC accreditation visit, that the money is just, you know, wasn't there. So this also then would provide some much-needed funding. And the last thing also with the University of Guam, as you know, is that there is this project that they have been already working, and it had been actually very successful. And that's the restocking of our, you know, our waters with local fish, you know, the maniak, and the rabbitfish, the sesjen. And those are projects that the University of Guam, the Marine Laboratory has been, has been very successful doing this, and we'd like to see a continuation of that at the university. So these are just examples of things that we originally wanted to do. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it. But, you know, it's something in which then now I would have to make it a point to meet then with the governor and encourage him if he could continue then to fulfill these projects that are, you know, needed in our school institutional, educational institution. So that's the only amendment I have that I'd like to add in the, in the language of our legislative findings and intent. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So we have Bill 174 before us, and the First Amendment being proffered by the sponsor of the legislation is to amend the legislative intent. And any senator wish to be heard on the amendment before we go to the main motion? Any senator wish to be heard on the proffered amendment in the intent section? Seeing none. On the main motion, on the Bill 174 as amended, any senator wish to be heard? Senator Sniklis, did I see you? Oh, Senator Espaldon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may ask the author to yield to a question, and the question-
Madam Speaker, questions being posed.
And the question would be that, is whether any fee will be paid to the Guam Economic Development Authority for their assistance in refinancing this bond?
I mean, I know that they, whatever, whenever they go out, of course, there will be. I don't know what that is. I did not, you know, put that on the bill.
Well, then, that's acceptable, because we don't know. But normally, they do, and I would imagine that's standard practice. So at that, at this point, Madam, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to proffer my amendment, which just got passed out. And that basically will read that any fee to be paid to GEDA for their assistance in refinancing 2006, 2006B, 2008 Certificates of Participation shall be from the source of debt service for these notes, as opposed to taking it from, from the bond itself, and then us having to pay, having to pay interest for their fees over the life of the, of the bond.
Okay. Senator Espaldon has proffered an amendment. Any senator wish to be heard on it? Senator Sniklis?
Full support.
Okay. On, any, any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard on the Espaldon amendment? Any objection to the Espaldon amendment? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the main motion, any other senator wish to be heard? On the main motion, Bill 174 as amended, any senator wish to be heard? Madam Speaker, you are welcome to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to just please add Senator Mike Sniklis on this, and Senator Respecho as co-sponsors. Oh, and Senator Espaldon.
All right.
While I'm up here.
Senator Sniklis, Respecho, and Espaldon. Any objection? On the motion to send the bill down, any objection? Bill 176, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, move to place Bill 176-33 on the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss the bill.
Any objection? Seeing none. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first of all, I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, the Oversight Chair of Agriculture, Senator Respecho, and also Senator Uggan for co-sponsoring this measure. What this does, Mr. Speaker, it does really two things. One is it amends the current FY 2016 Budget Act and allocates $367,238 from the Agriculture's budget. It allocates that amount for, to fund eight forestry aid one positions and three, up to three conservation officer positions. What it is, Mr. Speaker, is that we've included similar language in the FY 2015 budget. However, we didn't include that in this year's budget. And so Agriculture has taken that as, even though in their budget submission, they have included these positions as warm bodies. And even though we had passed a budget that gave them, gave the governor really, you know, authority, it was a lump-sum budget, this was important to ensure that these officers and forestry aides that are currently there at Agriculture continue to be there to provide the critical service that they do for our community, which is the protection of Guam's natural resources. And so the second part of this, of this legislation, Mr. Speaker, it simply enters these individuals who have been there now for a few years, who have gone through the process when they were hired. It allows them to enter into the classified service of the government. Again, this is an initiative that this body attempted to provide great flexibility to, to the department. Senator Respecho and Senator, one of our former colleagues, Yamashita, was, really worked hard, and we got the assurances of the department at that time that they would move these individuals and process them into the classified service. However, that wasn't done, and so, you know, we're taking that initiative here now and ensuring that's done, all in an effort to ensure that there's no interruption of providing the service of protecting our natural resources. So ask my colleagues to please support this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. Senator Uggan has indicated a desire to speak. Any other senator wish to be heard on the, on the bill? Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and fellow colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I too would like to stand in support of this particular measure. It did go through review and consideration by my committee, and one of the things that we discovered is, colleagues, this is not for unrecollected or vacant positions. These are individuals who have been serving in a non-classified service for a limited-term status, or with a limited-term status, and it's allowing them to be able to continue into this fiscal year. One of the biggest challenges and concerns that a number of them had, and they all provided testimony at the public hearing on this legislation, is that they were concerned that upon the turn of the fiscal year to October 1st, that they would all automatically be terminated. And they're asking for the opportunity to not only continue to maintain their employment, but to also compete for the classified service should the Department of Agriculture be able to proceed with classifying these particular positions. We did receive verbal commitment that, albeit in the last fiscal year, it was not realized, there's a new director, Mr. Soblon, and he has extended the commitment that during the course of this fiscal year that he will work aggressively with the front office to ensure that the recruitment for the classified, classification or the classified positions for these particular positions, not individuals per se, but these particular positions, that he'll be recruited, and hopefully, by the conclusion of this fiscal year, that these positions will be filled with individuals serving in a classified service. So, Mr. Speaker, I certainly stand in support of this. I commend the sponsor for addressing this issue once it was brought to his attention, because I know that he also assisted our former colleague Senator Eileen in terms of trying to address this and ensure not only the continued employment of these individuals, but the Department of Agriculture, to utilize their resources and their administrative power to be able to recruit for these positions. It's already recognized that not only the forestry officers and the conservation officers, but it's already recognized that the requirement exists for these positions to be filled by virtue of the services that they're providing our island community. So I stand in full endorsement of this legislation, and I certainly encourage our colleagues to give it positive consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 176? Seeing Senator Sniklis?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just some questions, just so I can clearly understand what we're doing.
Just some questions, just so I can clearly understand what we're doing here. So, we're going to be taking $367,000 from the existing budget and earmarking it for these particular positions. Is that correct?
Do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, that's what it says.
Okay. So, are these positions currently, do they currently exist and are they currently filled? Or are we looking at creating new positions and then filling them with the appropriation?
They're filled.
They're currently filled. So, how are they, how are they funded currently or why are we appropriating additional funds for positions that are already filled?
Well, we are in the new fiscal year. And so, when they submitted the budget, you know, to, you know, to the legislature, these, these positions, these are warm, warm bodies that have already been filled. And the problem, the problem was we didn't include a provision that specifically allocates this amount for those, for those positions for this fiscal year, just like we did for fiscal year 2015.
So, the, the positions are already, so how are the positions already filled if we didn't include the amount already to, to fund the positions?
They were filled, Mr. Speaker, in fiscal year 2015 because they had the authorization. We were given the verbal commitments during the public hearing that they're going to continue to have these individuals because we, they knew what the intent was of this body, is continue these individuals on a limited term, limited term status until this bill is, is heard and eventually passed into law. But as, as I'm going to repeat again, as what was submitted in their budget, these, these positions are all budgeted for. However, it did not have a specific, a specific allocation which we're doing here.
Senator Sniklis, that's efficient.
I'm just trying, I'm really just trying to understand how the, the, the mechanics is working here. So, we have these positions, they're already filled. If they're already filled, then they're already getting, they're already being paid for. Why are we appropriating money to pay for these positions if they're already being paid for? I'm, I'm still trying to connect the dots on that.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, these individuals haven't been paid because we haven't, you know, we haven't passed this. They're working and they haven't received their paychecks. That's, that's the last report we got today, today's payday. And, and even though we got that verbal commitment that they're going to continue, I, I hate to, to, to assume that we're going down the same path we did last, last year, or the, the last time we were going to session for the FY 2015 budget cycle together with Senator Yamashita, it just didn't happen. And so, these individuals are there, these officers are there, the forestry aides are there, but the last report we got today is they haven't been paid.
Senator Uggan, do you wish to contribute to trying to clarify this?
Please, Mr. Speaker, if I may, and, and that's one of the reasons why it was referred to my committee rather than to your committee as the Chair of Appropriations, Mr. Speaker, is because the language reached, I'll be allocated so specifically because, because concerns were raised about whether in fact sufficient allocation or appropriation was provided to this agency. The language was formulated, and I hope the sponsor can reinforce this statement, was formulated to ensure that this amount continues to be set aside for these positions that are presently filled on a limited term basis. So, rather than arbitrarily terminating these individuals, that based on this legislation, it would retain those funds so that the Department of Agriculture would have the flexibility to be able to transition and officially recruit for these positions affiliated with classified personnel. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Sniklis?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm just very bothered. So, so what we're saying now is we hired people, they're on the job, we didn't have the money to hire them and we don't have the money to pay them, but they got hired?
Either, either sponsor wish to yield and answer or address the question posed?
Can you repeat the question?
How are people still employed if they're, if they're not funded? Or if there's no, if the, how, how can you still have your job if you're not, and not be paid? I don't understand how, I mean, if a position's vacant or if the funding for a position expired, how, how are we, how is this government compelling people to work and we don't even have the, the money in place to, to pay them?
Do you want to yield?
Well, you know, I, I think the best, the best people to answer that would be the people in the administration. I mean, it's simple, Mr. Speaker. We've, we've, we've laid out, I've laid out what this, what this piece of legislation sets out to do. I've laid out the fact that these individuals, these hardworking individuals, these conservation officers, and these forestry aides continue to, to work because they provide a critical service to our community. If, if the good senator, you know, wishes to, to not support it, he can simply vote, simply vote it down. So...
Now, Mr. Speaker, this isn't, this, I have no problem with people working and earning their pain doing their job. What I do have a problem with is, you know, we, we do have wage and hour laws here on this island that are supposed to be followed. How are people being made to work if they're, if they don't actually have a job? You know, how are they still on the payroll? How are they still being told to report and to provide a service when their, their positions haven't even been funded? I mean, that's like, you know, we have substitute teacher positions in DAE, Mr. Speaker. Imagine calling up the substitutes and saying, "Come on in and substitute the class." And then we, we come to the legislature later and ask them for the money to pay for the actual substitute teacher to do the job. Who signed off on these people to continue working for this fiscal year? Who's the certifying officer that continued the, the positions and has these people working? It's very unfair, Mr. Speaker, to have people working and we didn't even provide the, the resources.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, just based on, I guess, knowing the program that has been in a while, when the program was created many years ago, these positions were being filled at a, at a, not as permanent positions, but there were employees in this position that were getting paid. And this, this, this legislation was to follow through on the commitment on the program that was created many years ago to actually finally give them the full-time positions because they had been working there for so many years. This was, the way I understood this was, this was the follow-through on the program that was created when this division was there.
Anyone else wish to address this question by Senator Sniklis? If not, that's the...
So, just hypothetically, Mr. Speaker, assuming we didn't pass this bill or, you know, we got, something happened, are those guys going to still be told to report, continue reporting to work? I mean, I'm very, very concerned as to the operation of this government with respect to what this, this legislation represents. Nothing to do with the author or the intent, but everything to do with what exactly is going on here that people are, are being made to work and we haven't even funded the positions? Is that even legal? Who's, who's authorizing this and who's doing this? And if we don't pass this bill for whatever reason, are they going to keep working and working until six months, nine months, 12 months from now, we eventually pass something? I mean, for these guys to have put in one hour more of work than they were supposed to have is already wrong. So, how, I'm, I'm very, very disturbed as to how this, how we even got to this point. And if the money is already in the agency, why do we even need to earmark it for this specific purpose if they're already working in the agency? They should just be able to take that money and pay them if they're already rightfully employed. Why aren't they paying their employees? Why do we need to allocate it specifically for this if the money's already there and they are already working for that agency? Who is authorizing the employment of people and not paying them?
Any of the sponsors wish to yield and respond to this question? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And to the proffer of the question, he had some very legitimate and valid questions that certainly perhaps may be outside the scope of members of this body to be able to directly respond to. But, Mr. Speaker, this is an authorization provision to allow, if in fact, and I was just, it was just very briefly shared with me, that there may be a restriction to hire limited-term unclassified personnel for an extended period of time. And that's why the concerns that he may bring up may be in question. But, this legislation was formulated to be able to continue the authorization for these individuals to retain their position in an interim timeframe and allow Department of Agriculture to be able to recruit in a classified service. So, I'm not going to respond to, to, to the question as to, as to why these individuals continue to report to work because by virtue of the comments and introduction of this legislation, and perhaps this legislation needs to be retroactive to October 1st, then, then, other than that, it's allowing the department to continue to retain the, the support of the personnel that are much needed at this point in time.
Senator Sniklis?
Oh, Mr. Speaker, I mean, and so this, and as I read further in the bill, it just becomes a little bit more problematic for me. Okay, so if these were limited-term employ, appointments, and their appointments did expire, and now we want to classify the positions and create this, these new classified positions and fill them, they're supposed to be filled based on a competitive application process. Now, if their appointments were supposed to have expired and they didn't expire, and now we have notwithstanding language in here that says notwithstanding any other provision of law or regulation, these individuals shall be admitted into the classified service of the government of Guam and ha, and shall have their mission as members in the classified service conducted without a disruption in service. What this, what, what this says is, we had limited-term employees, their employment expired, but we kept them on because now we want to classify it and just allow them to transition into classified service without having to go through the competitive application process. That's, that's very problematic now, Mr. Speaker, because are we authorizing a bypassing of the merit system by keeping people on the limited-term employment when it should have expired and automatically transitioning them into the classified service without going through the competitive application process? Don't get me wrong, there's probably, I don't know who these eight people are or these 12, 11 people are. And I'm probably going to piss them all off, but we really are not supposed to be doing this, Mr. Speaker. If the limited-term employment expired, then it's supposed to expire. And if we're going to create the classified service, then they're supposed to competitively apply and through the merit system get the job as a classified employee. Instead, what we're saying is, yeah, your limited-term employment expired, but somebody's just helping you out, keeping you on the job but not paying you because we're going to classify you now and transition you right and without having to go through the competitive application process. That's wrong on so many levels, Mr. Speaker. That is an aberration of the merit system.
Thank you.
I object to moving this down to the third reading file.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the, on the bill? Senator Espisho, you're recognized, as a sponsor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I certainly rise in support of this bill and I, I appreciate the comments of the retiring speaker, but as the Oversight Chair for the Department of Agriculture, I want to stress that these individuals have really been victims of circumstance. This authorization is needed in order for them to continue to be in this kind of position. I think that this started, the funding for these positions started off from a federal, federal funds. And last fiscal year, Senator Yamashita, Senator Rodriguez, and then others, including myself at that time, had to move to extend the authorization for, for that fiscal year. And, and that was very specific. So, when October 1st came around, this department no longer had the authority under that authorization for these individuals to continue. And so, with all the concerns about the aberration of the merit system, you know, this bill was publicly heard and notices were sent out, and we did not hear from the Civil Service Commission or the Department of Administration or any other agency expressing concern with what those concerns were raised by the previous speaker. I think what we're attempting to do here is to recognize the need for these individuals to continue in this capacity because it is a protection of our natural resources. And we had a very well-attended public hearing. You know, these positions could have been, I believe, I believe, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I'm going to say that it was in the budget, but it was taken out because of the general provision that all vacancies were not funded. But I, I just know that, that the director, former Senator Yamashita, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Uggan, myself, and others who are very, who are monitoring this issue, they were monitoring this issue daily, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, even during the entire budget process. And, and there were some concessions made at the time that this amendment is not appropriate to put in the Budget Act because of the requirement and the need to have a public hearing so these things can be publicly discussed and publicly disco, disclosed so that we're very clear about what we're doing here. And I, I appreciate how patient the people were, especially Senator Rodriguez, in not wanting to put this in the Budget Act because something like this does not belong in the Budget Act, although it's a budgetary item and it's a budgetary matter. The issue of how they would continue in that kind of service, more particularly in the classified service, should not have been done in the Budget Act, and it was not. So, instead, it's being done this way where, where it's very clear what's, what's being attempted here, and this bill was publicly heard. But all I want to submit to this body is that there is a need to move forward on this piece of legislation. I object to the motion to refer it back to committee on the basis that you have these individuals in that position who still need to serve in that capacity, who are promised by the Department of Agriculture that whether or not this bill passes, they would be continued, but we got word that they haven't been paid since the beginning of the fiscal year. And so, all around, this is not only problematic, but disconcerting. And I think that what was being offered here is certainly a viable solution to ensure that these individuals who have been categorized, in my mind's eyes, victims of circumstance, this here is the remedy, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. And so, I ask that you understand the situation they're in, understand, and understand that what we're attempting to do here and how what's being proposed is the legislative remedy to resolving this issue. And so, I ask for continued deliberation, but in the end, I ask for support for Bill 176-33.
Thank you. On the main motion, any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Munia Barnes?
I promise I'll be brief, Mr. Speaker. I just want to say I stand and rise in support of Bill 176-33. And I just want to share with you that, as the retiring speaker spoke, and we were working on this on the previous terms, that this literally originated from a grant, a federal grant, and then it transitioned through. And in order to, to, after so many years getting, receiving funds, federal grant funds, then the government steps in and takes over, if I'm not mistaken. And this was one of those programs that the government had to work into. And I, I'm almost positive I'm correct, I'm just trying to get confirmation from my office. But I do know that when this was being approached to us to transition these employees who have, who are the warm bodies in those positions, that they did go through the merit system when they applied, when this grant was being performed by the Department of Agriculture. So, I just want to say that I rise in support of this and I understand what those employees went through and the commitment on, on making sure that this program works. I know that there was a lot of testimony that was provided from, from the folks from the university, from the Department of Agriculture, that were there, the need from other stakeholders in the community, the recycling community, that this program was needed and these employees went through their due diligence to, to hold these positions. And it was the government's commitment to transition these employees to the government of Guam process. So, I just want to say I support the efforts.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? Any sen, other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? Do you wish to close?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to our colleagues who rose in support of this measure. I, first of all, I would like to add Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes as a sponsor of this measure. But, Mr. Speaker, on that, that motion?
Without any objection.
Thank you. So, as, as, as you heard, Mr. Speaker, there was no effort here to bypass the merit, the merit system. These individuals have already gone through that. The, the program that was, that was mentioned earlier was indeed a federal program, and it's not us here making that determination that we're going to continue. It's actually the department, the executive branch, who made that determination that we need to continue the program and... we need to continue the program and, and have these forestry aides and conservation officers to continue to provide the service of protecting our natural resources. And so that's why they submitted it in, in their budget. However, in close consultation with Office of Finance Budget, with OFB, and also with the Department of Agriculture, we did come up with this solution to move this, this language forward in allocating these funds for, for these forestry aides and conservation officers. So this is something that was, again, worked, we've worked collaboratively with those who, who are vested in this and who are subject matter experts. So again, I ask my colleagues to please support this measure and, and vote positively. Thank you.
There's been an objection to sending it down to the voting file. All those in favor of allowing Bill 176 to go down to the voting file, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passed. On, next item on the agenda is Senator Michael Snickles on Resolution 177-33.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can make a motion to place Resolution 177-33 in the voting file and have an opportunity to briefly explain it.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Resolution number 177-33 is basically the Guam Legislature expressing their support for House Resolution Number Nine, the Innovation Act, which is in the U.S. Congress, which offers a host of critical fixes to the problem of abusive patent litigation by adding transparency around patent ownership, making defending against a patent suit less prohibitively expensive, and ensuring local businesses engage in e-commerce and not be victimized by such abusive litigation. The problem that the country, the entire nation is facing, Mr. Speaker, is that we have certain patents relative to websites that people are buying up, and they're very vague patents, but then they're using these patents to go out and sue every website owner who has these particular website tools on their, on their webpage, whether it's a drop-down menu, a hyperlink, or whatever. And so going through the Congress right now is a measure to make it more difficult for these, these, they call them patent trolls, for these patent trolls to be able to use these vague patents to sue these website holders frivolously, really, just to try and squeeze money out of them. The U.S. Government is recognizing, at least some members in the Congress are recognizing, that they need to be protecting our web commerce and our online facilities, so that they're not going to be victimized by these kind of frivolous lawsuits, by people who really are just trying to find every which way to squeeze a buck out of people who are doing things, you know, fairly and honestly. And so this resolution in, pretty succinctly states that we are stating our support for House Resolution Number Nine, and we do believe that it's important for us to protect our e-commerce environment here on Guam, particularly our, our realtors, who've come to me asking me to introduce this legislation, to protect them against these kind of frivolous lawsuits, so that we don't have the cost of doing business, and ultimately, those costs getting passed on to our consumers, being driven up by expensive litigation costs for people who are just really trying to take advantage of the system. So I humbly ask my colleagues to please consider supporting Resolution 177-33. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the, on Resolution 176, any other senator wish to be heard on it? Any senator wish to be heard on Resolution 177-33? If not, you may close. Any objection to sending it down to the voting file? Madam Speaker, you recognize on 176?
Thank you very much.
I mean, 17, I'm.
174.
169.
I mean, 169, you're right. I got this. It's a, it's a long day. I just hope I get this right. So 169-33, and the, the president of the university came down to clarify it. So what I'd like to do then, if I, notwithstanding the actions of this body, is to pull back that amendment that we had amended, actually was partially amended by Senator Underwood in the deletion of "and there shall be no power" to that. So I want to, I want to bring, so what is, I want to go back to that amendment, and then based on that.
There being no objection, is there any objection to the notwithstanding request to go back?
Okay, thank you then. So what, what we, what I want to do here, the very first thing I want to do then is that, first of all, is to make sure that legal counsel then is able to make the correction where we had C, but it's supposed to be E, that's it, and to put the proper section numbers and the, and the laws reflecting here. And everything else then will be deleted, that was questioned by our colleagues here, and to keep the language that's underscored, where it says that the university is authorized to grant right-of-way access to the construction site and building, and access to utility Eastman, the right-of-way and Eastman access shall remain in effect during the entire term of the lease, leaseback agreements. That will be the only language then that will be there.
Is, is that amendment clear to everybody?
Senator, clear, Senator Frank Blas in particular? I just want to make sure because.
We're going back to the original.
Yes.
The first amendment that was going to be made to strike the first seven lines.
Yes, and also.
And just remain with the right-of-way, last three lines.
And even the section that Senator Nerissa deleted, so really, the only language that will reflect are the last two sentences. And I spoke to legal counsel about it, and I need for her then to actually put the proper now sections, subsections in the, of the public law.
I think legal counsel and the clerk are having problems with the way that you're phrasing your amendment.
Oh, okay.
It would seem to me that E remains as it currently is in the existing statute.
E.
You're adding a new subsection number, whatever it is.
Which is.
For just the right-of-way issue.
Okay, yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, legal counsel. Okay. So is that okay? I know it's the end of the day, geez, you know? Yes.
Does everybody understand the amendment? It's only going to be the last three lines? Any objection?
Thank you. The other is, if I may, and this will be, because I, legal counsel said it would be best to go ahead and put it in, is that the question was asked when we were saying reserve, you know, and then continuously reserve rather than appropriated, that she felt that, and I know we did say that, that normally each year we do, we do the budgeting, and then we appropriate the monies, and she's just feel that, that it would be best if we just go ahead and put the language to, which is to annual appropriation in an amount not to exceed. So reserves subject to annual appropriation in an amount. So that was the question that was brought up, and we said we were just going to leave it up to Office of Finance to be the one to just, yes, appropriate it every year, but she suggested that we put the language in and to authorize legal counsel to put that Because that's what it is. You're right. Because every year we do it, every year we do the annual appropriation, but.
And I thought you read legal coun- I mean, bond counsel's letter that says she wanted.
Yeah, to put the word reserve, that's, it is, but then the extra language will be subject to annual appropriation, which you're. Yes. It's better to add.
I'm going to take a very short recess, and Speaker. Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much again, Mr., Mr. Speaker, and this is the last, and legal counsel has asked is that, basically, and the last amendment that I had for K was just to make sure that the correct recitation of the Section 18K of Public Law 31-229, as repealed and reenacted by Section Two of Public Law 31-277, read as follows, because that's the correct, the correct language reflecting K, Section 18K. Originally, I did not put all of that on the top. I just put a new Section K.
Is that clear with counsel and clerk? Counsel and clerk, are you?
Yes.
Have you?
For K, to amend the obligation of the university, where it says Territorial Education Facilities Fund, is to amend Section 18K of Public Law 31-229, as repealed and reenacted by Section Two of Public Law 31-277, to read as follows. Yes? Yes.
All right, it's understood. Any objection to the amendment proffered? Any objection to the amendment proffered? If not.
And the last, and the last thing, of course, I would like to add, Senator, Senator Snickles on to this.
Hearing no objection, Senator Snickles has as a close.
And Senator Frank, and Senator Frank Blas Jr.
And Senator Frank Blas. On the motion to send the bill down to the voting file.
No objection.
No objection.
Yes, I have to go.
We ask you.
Madam Speaker, I'm not sure if we've cleared the calendar, is that? Mr. Majority Leader, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having exhausted the agenda on the second reading file, I do have to make a notwithstanding motion to bring back Bill 91 from the third reading file, back to the second reading file, to permit Senator Torres to make one amendment that I would believe would address the concerns some colleagues raised with respect to, to that bill, which is relative to the issuance of business licenses. And she has prepared her, she has prepared her floor amendment, Mr. Speaker, and copies have been made and distributed, so it should not take us too long.
All right. Any objection to going back to 91?
That will be one.
Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to move that we place Bill Number 9133 LS on the third reading file, and may I have permission to discuss it briefly?
Hearing no objection.
No objection. Mr. Speaker, Bill Number 9133 was, was discussed previously, but what I wanted to bring to the attention of the body is, subsequent to us agreeing to move it to the third reading file previously, there was some reservation about a certain constituency that may have multiple licenses, and, and whether, it was discussed whether this would in fact have a, a negative impact on those, or at least an impact of inconvenience. And so what, in, in order to rectify those people that are more the exception to the rule, but nonetheless significant, particularly people with real estate-type transactions, I'm proposing an amendment to Bill Number 9133 under the terms of license that will allow a licensee holding multiple licenses to elect to have the multiple licenses expire concurrently, one year after the, its term, on the month that is chosen at the licensee's discretion.
Thank you. Any senator wish to be heard on this amendment by Senator Torres? Seeing no hands, any objection to it? All right.
There is a copy of the amendment that I believe can be circulated, if it hasn't already.
It's been circulated.
Okay, thank you.
On the motion to send Bill 91 back down to the voting file, seeing no objection. Mr. Majority Leader. Mr. Majority Leader?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, given that the bills all need to be engrossed, and there are quite a number of them, I move that we recess until 10, sorry, 4 o'clock on Tuesday. Just to be clear, 4 o'clock on Tuesday, we recess.
We're in recess until 4 o'clock Tuesday.